Good evening. It's now six o'clock and the regular session of the Planning Commission of City Lancaster please come to order. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Metters and our flag salute will be led by Commissioner Cook. If you please all stand.
Let's pray. Lord, we're grateful that we can come before you tonight in prayer. I thank you for the rain we have this weekend. What a blessing. Lord, I pray that you continue to give our commissioners wisdom in the decisions they make. And, Lord, as we, as a city, honor you, may we continue to receive your blessings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Another roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook.
Present.
Miguel Coronado.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Sandy Smith, absent. Vice Chair Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Boes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard from Commissioner Smith this evening on the way over. She's ill, still trying to recover from flu bug that's going around, and I think a lot of us have had it in various stages over the last few weeks. We wish her well and a speedy recovery. Public business from the floor. If an individual or individuals are unable to stay through the entire meeting, we offer a short two-minute window of opportunity to express your concerns about agenda items if you want to be an early speaker. Hopefully, you've filled out a speaker card and indicated that on the top of it. Do we have any early speakers?
No indications of that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then, public business from the floor. When we call each agenda item, we will then either hear a staff report or not, depending on the action item before us. Anyone who's filled out a speaker card will have an opportunity then to address us. The applicant has an opportunity to present their case. And then, individual speakers who wish to address us have three minutes to discuss whatever they choose to discuss on the agenda item. And at the end of the meeting, then, we have public comments from the floor relative to any non-agendized item. Just to give you a little background, this commission meets generally twice a month, usually the week prior to this meeting. We meet in public, however, it's typically a staff meeting where city staff presents the cases that are agendized to us. We have an opportunity to discuss them directly with staff. However, we do not deliberate nor do we make any decisions. Those meetings are public, and anyone and everyone can certainly attend if you wish. So, if you see an agenda item come up and we don't necessarily hear a staff report and we take action on it, it's probably because we've already been fully informed about the matter before us. And particularly if there's no speakers, we tend to move right through the agenda. First action item on our agenda is a consent calendar, which is approval of minutes of our regular meeting of October 17th and a recess meeting of October 20th. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from October 17th, 2016.
Thank you. Have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote. Shall we rewind it? You didn't break it, did you?
Should we try a manual vote?
All right, let's have a voice vote, then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No opposed? All right. Motion passes. Five oh with Commissioner Smith absent. Okay, for the record, we've received correspondence on our action items. First of all, we've had four modifications to our agenda. Typographical error on page four of our agenda. The minutes dated October 17th, 2016. On item number four, condition eight was amended. And on item five C, page one, was amended. Those are all posted online and are available at the rear of the chamber if anybody cares to look at them. We received a, this is on item six, which is at the end of our agenda. We received a rather lengthy email from Steve Fine, which we just handed to us this evening. We also have received what are called uncontested letters, which are letters from applicants indicating that they agree with or don't agree with the conditions as recommended by staff. And in all cases before us tonight, we've received uncontested letters for every item other than item six, which is a City of Lancaster application and may not be an action item tonight. So, any questions from anybody? Good to go? All right. First item is a continued public hearing on conditional use permit number 16-05. We heard a staff report last time on this item, and we continue the public hearing because there was a question about, Mr. Ing, what was it about?
Good evening, Chairman Boes, Commissioners. This was continued from the last Planning Commission meeting due to public noticing that was not carried out properly. The mailing labels that we had received did not have the correct addresses. We did receive subsequently accurate mailing labels, and we proceeded with our public noticing procedures. And so, this public hearing is back before us this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Were there any further comments from the person that raised the issue regarding the noticing?
No further comments.
All right, thank you. We have an applicant on this and they're represented here tonight, I believe, somewhere. Yep. You care to share anything with us again tonight? No? All right, thank you. Do we have any speakers on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker's card.
All right. Just so everybody understands the rules of the road, even though the applicant has not made a presentation tonight, they would have an opportunity to rebut anyone who cares to address us on this action item. So, could we have the first speaker, please?
Yes, Michelle Lowry.
Ms. Lowry. You were here last time, right?
I was.
That's okay. I thought I recognized you.
On behalf of my, hello, good evening. On behalf of my daughter, who is the property owner and occupant of the residence that's located at the southern end of the project, our main concerns was the safety as well as privacy for her property, being that she has two small children. She did have her second child just over a week ago, by the way.
Congratulations.
I had an opportunity, thank you, I had an opportunity to review the plans on file, and what I have taken note of is, Seth, there are eight parking spaces that will be situated adjacent to the adjoining wall that divides the property. On the other side of that wall is her backyard and also one section of her home, with one area being a bedroom. The concern is perhaps drivers penetrating that wall without proper barriers. So, that was something that I had an opportunity to look at, this specifications of, apparently there's going to be a six-inch curb, cemented curb, which is going to, which is intended to be the barrier. Another issue is, in light of our homelessness in the area, there is a single view of the parking structure that is located at the rear of the building, which is closest to my daughter's property. For safety purposes and security, there could potentially be encampments or straggling onto my daughter's property by simply climbing the six-foot wall that's currently there. With me, I'm five nine and a half, I can stand on my tiptoes and see over that wall. So, what my daughter is requesting is that there is a masonry wall that's built up to where no one could climb that wall. There was something mentioned on the last meeting that to screen out and to develop some sense of privacy between the two properties, there would be a line of trees. However, the line of trees is kind of a false sense of security, in our opinion. So, we're asking that the trees be omitted and a taller wall be built. So, and also install some cemented or steel type of pillars in front of each of the eight parking stalls that will be situated adjacent to that wall. Thank you.
Could you expand on what you just said, just last said? I don't understand what you're asking for. Understand the height of a wall. What height would you suggest it ought to be?
I, reasonably speaking, just kind of doing some research, between an eight and 10-foot wall, I think would be feasible as opposed to the six-foot. Currently, the cemented wall is approximately five feet with an extension, which is red wood of an additional foot, again, which is easily.
Okay, and what was the comment about steel?
So, either a cemented or a steel pillar of some sort in front of each of the parking stalls. I've seen in the areas where there've been cars to drive over the lower barriers.
Are you talking about bollards? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Right. And so, just create something so cars do not go through that wall into the backyard.
That would be a very unique opportunity. We've never, ever conditioned a project in the last nine years that I'm aware of that type of opportunity, nor have we conditioned a project with an eight or 10-foot wall adjacent to residential that I recall. But at any rate, appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this matter? Mr. Ludick?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is the applicant representative here? Do you care to offer anything? And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Christine Elias. I work for the engineer. We help to draw the plans and design the building. And can we please see the site plan on the screen? Okay, she's referring to those southern parking spaces, and we have like about at least 10 feet of landscaping in between her property and the parking spaces. Just wanted to point this out. And that's it. I think the wall and the pillars, this is something that we can do. But I wanted to, you know, show that the stalls are not exactly adjacent to the wall. There is about 10 feet or 11 feet of landscaping in between.
I'll provide some clarification. There's 10 feet of landscaping, but in addition to the 10 feet of landscaping, there's also additional two feet of concrete for where the wheel stop usually would be, but it's a two-foot wide concrete curbing. So, the distance between the curb and the southern property line is 12 feet.
So, in effect, the wheel stop gives you a net 10, 10 and a half, which is probably 20% better than anything that we've ever built around here for typical wheel stops, right? It's usually about seven or eight?
Usually.
You mentioned that you would agree to install bollards in your.
This is what we have to do, but I just wanted to point out that we have enough.
We typically don't negotiate conditions across the floor, but it's worth considering, I suppose. All right? Anything else you?
No, thank you.
All right. Mr. Ing, you care to comment on what we've heard?
Staff did take a look at the adjacent uses, and through the site plan analysis, we believe that the 10-foot landscape buffer, in addition to the six-foot block wall and the two-foot curbing for the wheel stop, would be sufficient to address the needs. There are certainly things that we can do in terms of tree selection or plant selection for the landscape areas that can help address additional buffering issues. So, we can be certainly selective with the type of trees to provide the type of any noise mitigation or any other concerns that the southern property owner may have. We would be happy to work with her on those details.
So, tell me about the masonry wall. There's an existing wall, transitional wall, it looks like, right?
The existing wall that you see in the photo is not six feet. It's lower than six feet. So, they would be required to reconstruct the wall to have a six-foot block wall.
On whose property line?
On the property line.
On the PL. So, there's the opportunity for a double wall?
There's an opportunity to do so. That's not exactly what's conditioned.
So, it would require the neighbor's cooperation to.
It would, yes.
Demolish and rebuild. Which is, our condition is to establish a six-foot masonry wall on the PL, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything from anyone?
Well, generally, I don't advocate any walls of any kind, but in this particular case, I do empathize with the property owners. And we, if the applicant doesn't have a problem as indicated to raise the wall or to secure it, just as she indicated, then I think it will be good for the residents around that area, specifically around those homes there. I think that I will advocate that.
Okay. Anything further from staff? All right, then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt resolution number 16-09 approving conditional use permit number 16-05.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes four one.
Four one. All right, thank you. Item number three, which is also a continued public hearing on tentative tract map number 62121, which is a project by Royal Investors Group granting a one-year extension. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No speaker slips, Mr. Chairman.
No speakers? All right. Anyone care to hear a staff report? Nope? All right, then. So, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to October 16th, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list attachment to resolution number 05-71.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
As we've mentioned before, this was originally a 115-lot tract subdivision that was reduced to 82 lots in conformance of the city's general plan, and the corner becoming a single, potential single parcel of commercial, right? It's actually not a true tentative map that's received before us. It's a sketch of a wannabe.
Yes. It's a concept layout.
No, a wannabe. All right, new public hearings. Item number four, tentative tract map number 70761. So, without objection, the public hearing is open on this item? Do we have speakers?
No speaker's cards.
None?
None.
None, okay. Anyone care to hear a staff report?
No, sir.
Nope? All right, then. So, without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on this applicant.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 16-10 approving tentative tract map number 70761.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. The next items, 5A through G, are tentative tract map extensions. So, without objection, the public hearing is open on 5A through G. Do we have speakers on any of these?
No, Mr. Chairman.
You do not? All right. Anyone care to hear a staff report on any of these items? Take them separately or all at once, whatever you'd like, whatever your pleasure.
I choose to take them separate because there are two in which I'll have to recuse myself due to property ownership.
All right, let's do that. All right, so then, 5A, tentative tract map number 61535.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to October 17th, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subjects to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 05-67.
I'll second that.
Thank you. This is the last extension of this map. So, come October 17th, 2017, unless the final map is filed, it's dead, right?
Unless the city's regulations change.
That's a big and less.
As it currently stands, you are correct.
That's a big and less, yeah. All right, please vote. Please vote. Go ahead.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The public hearing is open on this. This is Royal Investors Group, one-year extension on map 61681, and it's also the third and last extension available. Care to hear a staff report, anyone? No? No speakers? No? Consider a motion.
I move to grant a one-year extension to November 21st, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 05-77.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item, which is a new public hearing on tentative tract map number 62578. The applicant is Civil Designs and Drafting, Inc., for a one-year extension on 62578. And this is the third and last available for this map as well? Okay, thank you. And no one wanted to hear a staff report on this? Okay. So, we'll consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to November 21st, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 0578.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
No, this one.
Yes, please let the record show that Commissioner Harvey will recuse based on property ownership in the proximity of this location.
Very good. Thank you. All right, this item is a public hearing on tentative tract map number 62664, which is an applicant, which is Royal Investors Group for a one-year extension, which is also the third and last extension for this map. That's correct?
Correct.
All right. Anyone care to hear a staff report? No? We have no speakers? No? We'll consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant a one-year extension to November 21st, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditional list attachment to resolution number 05-80.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing further? Please vote.
Do you want me to get Cassie?
Motion passes four zero.
Yep, with Commissioner Harvey recusing. All right. Next item.
Is Commissioner Harvey recusing herself for the next item?
I don't know. Possible. Okay, the next public hearing is tentative tract map number 62841 for Royal Investors Group, a one-year extension. And this is the third and last as well, right?
Third and last.
Okay. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this? Any speaker's cards? None? All right. What's your pleasure, folks?
I move that we grant a one-year extension to December 19th, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 05-92.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Nothing further? Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is public hearing on tentative tract map number 66396. The applicant's Anlo Valley Engineering. This is a one-year extension.
Sorry.
And Commissioner Harvey is going to recuse.
Yes, due to property ownership near this proximity, I once again will have to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Need to sell some property.
All right. So... Staff report, anyone? No? Comment cards?
None.
None? All right. What's your pleasure, folks?
I move we grant a one-year extension to October 21st, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 07-37.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. This is the one where Port Hill Water District didn't properly indicate the name of their own board members? Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
Someone we know. Sheldon Carter, right? Commissioner Carter. Anyway. All right. Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Harvey recusing herself.
Thank you. Welcome back. All right. And the last public hearing item under 5G, which is tentative tract map number 69466. The applicant is Anlo Valley Engineering and it's a one-year extension, the first of three. Anyone care to hear a staff report? Speakers, cards? None?
None on this item.
All right, very good. What's your pleasure, folks?
I move that we grant a one-year extension to December 19th, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number 07-58.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number six. Item number six is a proposed amendment to the Lancaster Municipal Code, Title 15 and 17, entitled Zero Net Energy Standards for New Single Family Residential Development. The applicant's the City of Lancaster and it impacts a substantial amount of residential development, single-family detached residential development in our community. Ms. Garibay will be presenting to us tonight as well as other members of the city staff. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a wonderful day. Yes, you're correct. As you all know, we were directed by the Planning Commission a couple months ago to determine the potential cost of developing a ZNE home, to figure out what the cost would be, what the method. We'd go about building a home, what a ZNE home meant, and to come and report back to the commission. Delighted to be here to do that tonight. As you all know, we have a very forward-thinking council, a very forward-thinking mayor, city council. We are... They've set some policies that have literally raised the bar for the state. We were the first city in the entire state to have a solar ordinance for residential homes. We're the first city to become a community choice aggregator, so an energy buyer and seller for their community. And we were also the first city to declare a goal to becoming zero net energy. We are now, because of all these steps that have been taken, we are now in the position to take an additional step towards becoming a net zero community by requiring that new single-family homes are built to zero net energy standard in advance of the state's 2020 mandate, which we provided some information about a few months ago when we met. Staff reviewed research and literature and determined that a ZNE home is one that generates as much energy as it uses. So essentially, what that means is it's a home that's built very energy-efficient to the highest level of efficiency possible and then you couple that with a solar system to provide any additional energy that's needed for that home. With that said, obviously, we can tell that we are a lot closer to that state mandate that's coming in 2020 than most cities in the entire state. So that's pretty exciting. Developers in our community have been meeting our solar standards since 2014, with Lancaster residents benefiting from lowered energy bills, which is wonderful. What we're recommending tonight is a modification, as you mentioned, of our existing solar ordinance that will require that all new single-family homes have a minimum of a 2-kilowatt solar system installed. A developer can... And one thing I do want to note is that a developer can decrease that amount after showing that they can still meet that zero net energy requirement through, you know, plan review and the things that happen as you build. Through our research and work with the investor-owned utilities, we've learned that if you add 2 kilowatts of solar for every square foot of home that you build, you will achieve that zero net energy goal that we have. Another reason that that 2 kilowatts is a target number for us is because we know that there is a mandate coming and it's actually coming very soon. January 1st of 2017, developers will be required to build homes that are 15% more efficient than they are right now. And so that's why that 2 kilowatts is important for us to note. The caveat that Warren and I found, and I forgot to introduce my partner here, Warren Bennett, who's our chief building official. The caveat that Warren and I found in going through all of this research is that if you... If a developer installs a 2-kilowatt system, they are exempt from that 15% energy efficiency requirement that's coming in 2017. In our meeting with the commission a few weeks... A few months ago, we were asked to meet with developers to get their input. And we did meet with them a couple times and those meetings were very productive. We wanted to hear their ideas and develop other options for building a ZNE home. And so, as I said, those meetings were very productive. As you know, the city of Lancaster is in a very unique position. We're a community choice aggregator through our Lancaster Choice Energy program. So we are in the business of buying and selling energy that is greener and also more affordable for our residents. So that makes us very unique. What we developed in partnership with Lancaster Choice Energy is a ZNE mitigation fee. And so basically, what a developer could do is instead of installing solar on a rooftop, they could pay a ZNE mitigation fee, which would be equal to what they would have installed in that home. You know, one of the things that we noted through our conversations with the developers and just, you know, things that we've heard in the community is solar's not always ideal for some homes and some people just don't like it. You know, it's a choice that people make. And so this would be an additional option that developers could follow and still build that ZNE home that would be required. The fee would be used... The fee would be collected by Lancaster Choice Energy. Again, because we're in a unique position, we are in the position of buying and selling energy, we would use that fee specifically to build utility-scale projects. We've actually already done that. We have a 10-megawatt project that will actually go live in the next couple of weeks. And so we, you know, we've done this before and it's something that we will continue to do as we achieve our zero net energy goal. The fee would be calculated based on the amount of solar that would be required for that home. So for example, for a 2,000-square-foot home, what we would propose is to have a 4-kilowatt solar system. And if the developer did not want to attach a solar system to that home, they would pay a mitigation fee equal to 4 kilowatts that would be installed for that house. Now, the customer would benefit because we would offer that customer a reduced energy fee. And that's very exciting. Right now, our customers pay... Excuse me. About seven cents a kilowatt hour. And through the ZNE home program, what they would pay is actually half of that. So they would pay three and a half pennies... Or three and a half cents, sorry, for their energy, which is a huge reduction in their bill. It's something that they would enjoy for 20 years, which is the life of a traditional solar power purchase agreement, which is exciting. Now, the one thing I do want to note is that this option would not make them exempt from that 15% energy requirement. Brian and Warren and I had a really good conversation with the CEC to verify that because we thought, well, hey, that might be... That would be great, right? If we... If they didn't have to meet the 15% requirement and they could also do a ZNE mitigation fee. But unfortunately, the results were they would still have to do the mitigation fee... I'm sorry, the 15% energy reduction along with the mitigation fee. Now, another option that we created is actually a hybrid. So again, trying to keep away from that 15% energy efficiency that will be required in 2017, what we thought is, well, a developer could install a 2-kilowatt system on a home to exempt them from that 15% requirement and then they could essentially pay a lower ZNE mitigation fee that would cover the rest of the home. So if the house was a 2,000-square-foot house, they would be required to have a 4-kilowatt system. They'd install 2 kilowatts and then pay a mitigation fee for the 2 kilowatts that they would not be installing. In all three of these scenarios, residents benefit from a zero or very close to zero energy bill, which is very exciting. On average, a homeowner in Lancaster pays about $1,500 annually on their energy bill. So obviously, there is a substantial benefit to our residents if they don't have to worry about that. If that money is now... They're able to allocate it to something else, if they're able to spend it on their home, on whatever their needs are for their families. Staff has provided our commission with breakdowns based on the city's building fees. We did reach out to various developers, as well as the BIA. We were unsuccessful in getting some information from them. But the information that we did provide was based on true numbers of development that's actually taking place here in the city right now. And we wanted to make sure to provide those costs upfront to all of you. You know, one of the things that... One of the things that I will mention for developers is right now that there is actually a credit that they get. There's something called an ITC credit, which is 30% of the cost of the installation and the cost of the solar. They won't have that benefit in 2020 when this is a statewide requirement. But right now, they are able to take advantage of that. So that decreases their costs by 30%. Staff also provided various reports that showed a positive reaction to solar. Solar increases the value of a home. In one study, that value was calculated at just under $6,000 per kilowatt. Another study that we provided showed that homebuyers are willing to pay more for a solar home and that in that study equaled out to about $4 per watt. Finally, another report showed that the savings achieved through a solar system positively impacted how people felt about their... The purchase of a new home. Now, one thing I will point out is that all of those studies were statewide studies. Nothing was specific to Lancaster. But it does tell you that there is a positive correlation, that there is definitely a positive value. People see solar as a positive thing, at least here in our state. Additional work that will need to take place in consideration of this ordinance includes a mitigation fee study. The CEC, in our conversations with them, have, you know, have let us know that there will be a... We would have to produce a cost study analysis similar to what was done when we were looking at the solar ordinance. And for all of this review and for all of this information to be... To be reviewed by the CEC, it'd take about three to four months. So just to reiterate what we're asking tonight is that we modify our existing solar ordinance to require a minimum of 2 kilowatts of solar, increasing from the 1 kilowatt that's required now. And that we... That's right. And that we just require that 2-kilowatt minimum. And it's not an average. It's a per-house requirement. With that, I'd be happy to ask there any questions.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
We will hear from other staff members here tonight. So we'll try to focus on what you've presented to us and not get into Warren's field yet. Go ahead.
We had a solar requirement from before where you just said that we didn't require it on every single house, just in the development. It was supposed to have so many kilowatts. So what is the difference between this and the ZNE? You said it was just that each house now has to have it and there's not a total amount per that we're going to require?
Right. So right now, the way that the existing solar ordinance is written is it's an average. So for example, if you have a subdivision with 10 homes, you would be required to have a minimum of 10 kilowatts total. You could do that right now by having two homes that have a 5-kilowatt system and you've met that goal. What we're asking through this requirement... Through this modification is that each home would be required to have a minimum of 2 kilowatts, unless a developer can show through the review process that they can meet the ZNE requirement with a smaller-sized system.
One of the reasons we did it that way before was not every house in the subdivision was optimal on the roof.
Sure.
And that was why some houses would be bigger than others. Is that where your mitigation fee would then come in? Would be to build, say, like, solar community panels where they could then tap into a community panel instead of having it on their roof?
Yes, exactly. So if a developer, if the homebuyer decides that it's not something that they want to have on their home, the developer would have the option of paying that ZNE fee, which would be equal to whatever... Whatever sized system they would have purchased or had installed for that sized home.
That's not precisely what you asked, Howard.
No, thanks.
Well, the mitigation fee would go to build the community solar.
So not necessarily community solar. It would go to build a...
Utility scale.
Lancaster Choice Energy-owned facility.
It would be a utility... So the... I guess the theory is, even if the... Even if the solar is not attached to your rooftop, the solar is being built, right? So somewhere in the community, in Lancaster,[1550.81] So somewhere in the community, in Lancaster, we would build that 2 kilowatts of solar so that that home is still zero net energy, because you have all the energy requirements completed, and now you have that 2 kilowatts as part of a solar array.
That kind of moves me, and my next point is with net metering, which we're having issues with in certain states right now. Net metering be that your meter actually, you feed back into the grid and they pay you for it. We wouldn't have that with this type of deal, that we're not going to sell it back to Lancaster with this requirement? How is that going to work?
Not if it's not on your home. So right now, with Lancaster-Choice Energy, if you are a net producer, you can sell back to the grid, or you can sell it back to Lancaster-Choice Energy, and we actually do buy energy back at a lower rate than Southern California Edison does. But if that solar was not on your actual rooftop, then no, you would not be able to do that.
Why couldn't you with this mitigation fee? Wouldn't it be a similar thing? I mean, you are given credit for 2 kilowatts of production. Why then couldn't you have that compared to your bill and through the magic of computer algorithms, figure out how much more they would have produced out of that, too, than they used, and then they would get a break that way? I mean, the panels don't literally physically have to be on the roof, because we still have a grid system.
Right, I will say this, that typically, and actually, that 2 kilowatts, it was designed for a specific reason. So the investor on utilities are not, they don't promote people overbuilding solar, right? So they typically want you to build something that is sized specifically for your home, and that 2 kilowatts has been kind of that magic number. So it's not, it's very, it's not as common to have people that sell back. It's more common to just build something that is adequate for your house. And in some cases, also to actually end up paying the utility back at the end of your true-up.
You said earlier, 2 kilowatts per square foot, and then you said 2 kilowatts total. It's, how is that, for your 2 kilowatts per square foot of the house, if the house is 2,000 square feet? That seems to me like 2 times 2,000 would be a lot more than 2 kilowatts.
Yeah, it's actually 4 kilowatts. So for a 2,000-square-foot home, it would be, it's 2 kilowatts per square foot, but what we're saying is that the minimum would be 2 kilowatts. Or 2 watts, I'm sorry, 2 watts, 2 watts, 1,000 kilowatts.
Because that's a lot of difference in numbers there. I've still got a little bit of this sticking point on, you know, we put it on the roof, the grid goes down, the power lines blow down somewhere, and the grid's down, the house is not going to be powered unless it's off the grid. Now, how is any of this looking into how to take the house off the grid, power walls, storage? Because right now, the storage is grid storage, isn't it? It's pumped back out into the grid, and then when the clouds move over your house, your refrigerator doesn't suddenly quit running, or your air conditioner doesn't quit making cold air, you actually pull the power off the grid.
From the grid, you're right.
Very similar to a house that doesn't have a solar panel on top of its roof. So if we had community solar or industrial-sized solar, is it the idea of creating like Lancaster Island power? So if we have a major power line break somewhere, that Lancaster would still have energy, or would it be cut off? Any of that in planning at all?
No, we're still a part of the major grids, so, you know, as long as the grid itself is working properly, we wouldn't be cut off on anything. We are, as a city, looking at microgrids, though. There's actually a project that we got some grant funding for that's looking at exactly that. So how do you pull yourself completely off the grid and, in the event of an emergency or something like that, you are able to be self-sustaining? But in this instance, no, as long as the grid is working, we would still be operational.
Now, you said that there was an ITC credit that would go to the homeowner, so the homeowner buys the house.
It's actually to, I'm sorry, to cut you off, but it's actually to the developer. So whoever buys the solar system.
And the way it is today, the way the credits is, is if I contact somebody and I don't have solar on my roof, I get to take that all off on my income tax. And so we're taking that away from the homeowner now by not allowing them to have that credit? Isn't that kind of a double cost?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on how the, you know, homebuilder and the homeowner decide to set up that relationship, but, you know, for homebuilders that have passed on the cost, sometimes, you know, or if they haven't put up the solar, then the resident gets to take advantage of the 30%, and if the homebuilder puts up the solar system, then it makes sense for them to get credit for that system that they put up.
But that issue hasn't been addressed in the proposed ordinance?
Not at all.
Okay.
I think I've run out of questions.
Go ahead. You have? All right. Go ahead. I notice in a lot of the writing, depending on the staff report, the proposed zoning ordinance, some of the literature passed out, we have a lot of descriptive words, developer, builder, homeowner. This proposed ordinance affects every single detached, single-family home constructed in the city, assuming it's adopted.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be a subdivision, it can be a single home, right?
That's correct.
Does it affect multi-use properties such as apartments?
Multi-family, we didn't, they're not included as part of this ordinance, but their requirement would basically, the existing requirement would continue for them. So what we have in the existing ordinance is what we would continue for multi-family, because there is something in our existing ordinance that speaks specifically to multi-family housing.
Okay. So, tell me the mechanics of this 30% credit. How does it work?
So basically, the
Is that spendable money?
It's money off of their taxes, right? So at the end of the year
Off of whose tax?
Developer. Whoever buys the solar system and installs it and takes credit for it, they would write it off as part of their business taxes at the end of the year.
So you have to earn it to write it off, right?
Right.
Is it a direct dollar-for-dollar write-off as a capital expense annually, or does it have to be amortized over time?
I believe it's dollar-for-dollar, and it's the cost of installation and the cost of the system itself.
And who monitors that?
The federal government.
And how do they do that?
Not sure, I'd have to find out.
Go ahead.
So that's monitored from a federal perspective, but from a regulatory perspective, I thought this was something that the state of California was going with in 2017.
2020, they are.
But the 2017, though, that gap of time, that three years, how is it handled between that timeframe?
It's the same. So it basically, you know, the developer puts up the solar system, I would assume they track all, everything that they purchase and all of the, you know, the labor that's required to put up a solar system, and at the end of the year, they track that information. We don't expect that that'll be around after 2020, because right now, it's an incentive for them to do something, but I could be wrong, and maybe it continues on after that.
And you're saying it's a dollar-for-dollar?
It's for, yes, it's for the installation and for the actual system itself.
Was there a sales tax incentive, too?
I don't believe there's a sales tax incentive, but I do know that a couple of years ago, there was a GoSolar program that actually gave you a discount, and that was a state-run program. I don't know the exact amount, but there was a program for residential customers as well as for commercial customers that installed solar systems, and they got some, you know, rebate on systems. But because solar became such a big program in the state, and because people are doing it now without, you know, without an incentive, it basically went away.
I think that would probably be something I'd really like to see, is all the different incentives, tax breaks, and how the developer, how much money they would then have to make to be able to write it off with the incentive program. And then we could kind of weigh that, whether or not it was actually going to be
Valuable to them.
Do you actually think we ought to have a business model for this?
Yeah.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. I don't see any exhibits on the screen. Let's talk about real dollar numbers. Are you prepared to do that?
Sure, I can have Warren come up here, too, since we put these dollar figures together.
While you're doing that, you were kind enough to transmit through our staff the studies that you pointed out. Those studies were somewhat stale-dated, wouldn't you say, nine or 10 years old in some cases?
We looked for information that was as current as possible, but that's what we were able to find, and we wanted to make sure we provided something rather than not provide anything at all, so.
So we should rely on a nine- or 10-year-old study?
No, I think it's just the beginning of a conversation, and it's something that we can continue to discuss. We realized that there would be further discussion today, and that there would be an opportunity for us to talk about some of our, you know, follow-up points and things that you'd like us to do in between now and the next meeting, and that's one of the things that we knew we'd be working on.
A couple of things we had asked for in our previous meetings with you, as well as with our staff as well. We talked about trying to understand the market rate for the current developers that are, current tract developers that are building in our city or may be building in our city, and what they're selling, what the products are, and what per square foot, just for some benchmark at least, how much per square foot they were selling their product for. We also provided you with some comparisons to existing single-family homes. I think we'd all agree that residential development is extremely important for the growth of our community. We need new homes built in our community, as well as we need resale homes that are marketable as well. You can't have resale homes unless you have new homes built that ultimately turn into resale homes. As of an interest to me, I do not sell residential real estate, single-family homes, but I've been in the business for a couple of years. I won't say how long, but it's almost 40. So some of this information is pretty dear to me, because I believe that communities either move forward or they move back. They don't stay stagnant in one place, and if we're not moving forward, we're moving back. District, I've asked this question before, and I think I have the answer correct, that so far this year, 40 single-family home building permits have been issued in the city, right? About?
Yeah, about. 35 plus four models.
35 plus four models, so that's 39, 40, somewhere in that range. That's pretty skinny, wouldn't you agree?
I would.
And last year, it was less?
About the same.
And the year before?
The market's been depressed for several years now.
So real numbers here. If we see numbers from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, excuse me, we have six residential development communities currently in our city, five of which are active. And they're building homes in the range of no less than 1,750 square feet up to a little over 3,800 square feet, all across the board, all mostly on the west side, some, one tract on the east side, as near as we can tell. In real numbers, you provided us, you, Warren, provided us with a spreadsheet indicating what our city fees are. As I recall, it was somewhere in the $17,000, $18,000 per unit cost. Is that about right?
Yeah, our impact fees and inspection fees, depending on the size of the house, 15, 16, maybe 17, right in there.
So let's just take the size of the house. Pick a size.
2,000 square feet.
What's the fee increase proposed here? How much dollars comparatively?
Depending on which of the measures they select.
Let's take 2,500-square-foot house.
Then that would be a 5 KW system. It's approximately $4,000 per KW. That would add $20,000.
That would add $20,000 for the cost of the property to put it in. And if I chose, and if I, if the builder, homeowner, whomever choose to, rather than put it in, pay the mitigation fee, how much is the mitigation fee?
Be $24,000.
$24,000.
So it's actually $30,000 if you look at the city fees plus the solar system, it'd be $30,000, that's subtracting the 30% ITC credit. That's if you do solar.
So the proposal is to go from 17 and add 30 to that?
No, no, no. So the 17 plus the solar equals 30.
So it's an adder of $13,000. 80% increase in fee? That's what you're proposing?
It's actually 7% when we looked at the total cost of the house. So when we looked at option one
Talk about fees. What, okay, our little package, this, our family, what's the revenue stream per unit coming into the city? What do we get out of it? What does the city get, dollar-wise, on that 2,500-square-foot house?
As far as our fees go, we get $200 for the inspection fee. That's all we get.
No, 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 no. The mitigation fee.
Oh, the ZNE mitigation fee would be, if they did this, just the regular ZNE mitigation and still had to do the 15% energy efficiency, it'd be $7,000. If they did the ZNE mitigation fee, which, or, I'm sorry, the hybrid, which includes the solar plus a balance of the ZNE mitigation, it would be $29,000.
Well, why would I pay $29,000 where I can get by with 7? Am I understanding this correctly? No? Am I getting it? Or am I missing something here?
Maybe we should just review the fees. Are we, I want to make sure we're all looking at the same sheet. Are we looking at this?
I'm not looking at any sheet. I'm asking questions here in numbers, so I'm just trying to understand the number.
Yeah, so if we're just looking at a solar system, we'd be adding $20,000, and if you subtract the $7, $7,200 ITC credit, then it's $13,000, like you mentioned. If we're just doing the ZNE mitigation, and they still have to do the 15% energy efficiency, it's $7,000. If they're doing the 2 kilowatts of solar, which would be $8,000, plus the hybrid, which is the ZNE mitigation fee, it'd be an additional $4,200, so that'd be $12,000.
So it's a minimum of 7, a maximum of?
12.
And the revenue stream to the city at a minimum would be an increase of approximately
4,200.
Which is roughly 35% of the increase of what we're currently collecting. About right?
Yep.
That's big numbers. So what's the advantage? What does the city gain out of that, and what does the community gain?
So the residents gain, as we mentioned, they gain the solar system, right? So they don't have to worry about their energy bill for 20 years. That's pretty substantial. That's something important to people.
Well, you mentioned it was about roughly $1,500 a month.
It's about $1,500, depending on how many kilowatts. That's actually the average that we use with LCE. That's our joint rate comparison number.
That's only Lancaster-Choice Energy's portion, not Southern California Edison, right?
Right, that's only Lancaster residents. No one else, just Lancaster residents. So on average, they spend about $1,500 a year. So they now have that savings, which, you know, to some people can be pretty substantial, especially if they've just purchased a new home. For the city, the benefit is that we continue to move towards our ZNE, you know, our goal becoming a zero-net-energy community. We're doing a lot of different things, but this is just one additional thing that encourages people to have solar and to maximize the use of, you know, the greatest resource that we have here in the Alamo Valley.
How is that financed? How, you know, how is that value, whatever selection, whatever choice off column A, column B, or column C? How does that equate to being able to qualify for a new home, being able to finance it, being able to have it appraised? Do we have information that supports those questions?
Yeah, one of the issues that we've heard is that there is an issue with appraisals here in the community, and that's actually not, it's not just a Lancaster issue, it's kind of a statewide problem. And so, you know, we hear that loud and clear from developers. If they put up a solar system that costs this much money, they don't necessarily get that value back when they sell the home. So we realize that that's an issue, and we hope that that's something that the BIA is working towards solving, or, you know, somebody in that industry is working towards solving, because it impacts a lot of people. But, you know, the value is, again, the residents get to take advantage of something that is unique. We, as a city, get to take advantage of something that is unique to us, because we are an energy provider and we're able to maximize that, and we continue towards our goal of becoming a zero-net-energy community. It's something that very few people in the state can say, actually, we're probably unique in that sense, too, so.
Well, the current, based on this item number six that apparently you and Warren put together, the first 18 or 20 line items ending with solar inspection fee at $199, are the city fees. That's what this city collects.
Yes.
Some of which is passed through to other agencies, but it's what we collect.
Yes.
Roughly $15,000 to $17,000, depending on the size of the structure. Then you have Alamo Valley Joint Unit High School District fee, and you have Lancaster School District fee. You don't have east side in here, but they have a similar number that Lancaster does, so.
Yeah, east side, west side. Usually, there's a high school and the school fees.
Yeah, so the combination, that's about $9,000 to $10,000 per unit. San District is a flat, sanitation district is, being for everybody's interest, that's the sewer fee, another $6,100 bucks. LA County Water Works District, if you're building in the Water Works District, is $16,000. If you're in Quartz Hill or other smaller agencies, the numbers are different.
Yes.
But for the most part, that's a good number. And then you have AVEC, which is the supplier to LA County Water Works and Quartz Hill and all the rest of them, another $6,000, giving us a grand total, if, today's numbers, of a little over $55,000 for the average 2,500-square-foot home, which seems to be what's being built in our community, not much smaller than that. Is that about right?
That's correct. Keep in mind, too, that some of those fees are not included in that. There's grading fees that might be added to that. We standardize the building fees, which are also added. There's engineering fees for the infrastructure that goes on as well. So there's such a wide range, it was hard to put an actual number to it, that developers might be able to be of assistance with that. A lot of the tracts they're buying right now are already partially constructed, and so they're not paying full pop for all the fees that they would had they started from ground up.
Well, if they have a subdivision with existing meters in it that the cap fees have already been paid, then they don't have to pay that fee. However, if we're proposing to add 35% to 40% of our fee increase, then that has a substantial impact, I would assume, by the time you capitalize it from a builder's point of view, whether they be a single-family homeowner or a quote developer, call them what you will, somebody's got to finance that. So if you're financing cash out of your pocket, you've got to have some sort of rate of return, or you're borrowing it from a hedge fund, or from a bank, or from, you know, Aunt Sally, you have to have a rate of return on that. So all things being equal, then you got to figure out how to get it appraised. And it sounds like there's a concern that it can't possibly get appraised, that those increased numbers, at least from what we've heard so far.
That was one of the interesting things that came out in meeting with the developers, that there was the concern, even if they put it on the house, that they can't get the value for it, and so they can't get the loan for it. So that
So what about the 2017 code? The 15% increase in energy efficiency does have a cost, and we think it is how much, roughly?
It's probably $3,000 to $4,000, mostly insulation and equipment, that sort.
So it's more efficient HVAC units? No, those are as efficient as they can be right now, right?
Yeah.
Triple-glazed windows instead of dual-glazed, maybe? R30 insulation, that sort of stuff? 2x6 studs and Two-by-six studs instead of two-by-four and like that?
There's several different ways they can meet it. There's high-performance attics, where they basically double-insulate the attics, the measures you just mentioned, two-by-six walls, R-19, EFA system on the exterior. So these are things they're going to have to do come 2020 in order to meet the energy efficiency requirements, the way the state's ratcheting things down.
But what about two, 2017? I mean, that's next month.
Yeah.
That, I mean, we're talking about a three to four thousand dollar increase next month.
Correct. Mostly in insulation, whole-house fans, things of that sort.
So the, so the standard plans for the folks that are building now, do those meet the 2017 requirement?
No.
So if, so if I'm whomever, pick a name, and I've got a subdivision with four, four different floor plans in it, and you have a master agreement with plan check on those four floor plans, so come 2017, those floor plans and those designs have to be upgraded to the 2017 code, if they're not already there?
Correct.
Right?
Or they need to pull permits for those models before the end of the year.
And pay the seventeen thousand dollars per unit plus the permit fee?
Yeah.
You'd get pretty rich pretty quick, wouldn't you?
Well, if they've already gone through the plan check fee, we're not going to charge them twice for that.
No, no, I understand, yeah, but, I mean, it's still a cost. You know, that's, that's the business. I mean, so we'll hear from some of the stakeholders, I am assuming, tonight, if we have cards. Mr. Ludicke, we do?
Yes.
We have a couple. Okay, good. Are you, you guys are pretty comfortable with the numbers you've shared with us, right? What, what we really don't know, and, and, you know, maybe gets a little beyond where we might, where we think we ought to be, looking at residential developers' marketing price per square foot. We really don't know a hundred percent of the features that are being offered per unit, if you will. One, one developer may have a hundred percent package, including front and rear yard landscaping and, you know, patio covers and all the other bells and whistles everybody wants, and another developer may only be doing the minimum, and that would be then reflected in their price per square foot. So it's pretty difficult to get all apples in the box, right?
Yes. I will tell you something kind of interesting with the new developers that are coming in right now, with the plans we're seeing that are going to be designed to the 2017 standard, actually, 2016 that becomes effective, 2017. They're already planning to put the minimum two KW of solar on the roofs. The only reason we can figure they're doing that is because of the, the savings, they don't have to meet those energy-efficient savings that are getting ratcheted up. So they actually get a credit towards their energy budget by doing that. So we're seeing the industry going that direction already. Perhaps it's marketable for them, it's a sales feature for them, so some are already doing it. And if they do that, coupled with the ZNE mitigation fee, it would be a tremendous deal for the home buyer to be able to have fifty percent reduction on their energy bill on something that's already reduced because of having the two KW minimum.
That doesn't finance the project. That doesn't get it sold. That doesn't get it approved by an appraiser. That, you know, you can't, you can't spend it until you have it.
Yeah.
So how, how do we make that bridge? How do we get that gap covered? To me, that's the question. How, how do you make that connection?
One of the things we had discussed internally has to do with maybe reducing some of the other requirements that are on home builders. For example, the city ordinance requires rear, rear yard landscaping, which is at a significant cost. One of the builders, Harris Homes, has told us some of their numbers on that. But if we were to relax that, those fees might be able to be used.
So what does the community get out of that? What, what benefit to the, you know, the residential resale environment and the livability of single-family homes? What, what benefit is that? What do we gain out of that, other than the trade-off?
Yeah, it's a trade-off, yeah.
So I mean, if it's a good, if it's a good program, it's a good program. If we need to do trade-offs, it sounds a little suspect. We've done a lot of trade-offs over the years, but the last, I mean, the numbers haven't sustained us very well, have they?
No, they, they haven't. We have one incentive program right now that's going to expire the end of 2016. Very few builders have taken advantage of it, the Better Built Home Program. So you make good points.
Can you, do you, do you have, can you address that for us and just refresh us on what the Better Built Homes program is?
It's a, it's a rating system. If they can meet ten, ten points, then they get a twenty-five percent reduction on their impact fees. So the points can be with LED lighting, can be with solar, gray water systems, things of that sort that go towards the energy efficiency of the home. If they meet those, the twenty-five percent reduction, and they don't have to landscape the rear yards. It's kind of it in a nutshell.
And we've seen that. We, we, all of us, or most of us, have seen that, those types of developments. We toured those, and however, you're saying most of the, of the building community are not really taking advantage of that?
Yeah.
Very few.
Yeah. With thirty-five homes this year, it's...
None were. None have?
A, a few have.
Oh, really?
Yeah. One, one developer's looking at building out and getting permits for the balance of their, their available lots. I think it's fifty-four lots. They're discussing getting permits by the end of the year, so they can take advantage of that and not be impacted by the additional efficiency measures that are coming.
Okay, and that program is set to expire unless City Council extends it?
Yes.
Any plans to ask them if they're going to extend it?
No. Not enough to take advantage of it.
I'm not done. Anyone else care to talk? I don't want to monopolize it. I just want to flush out all the issues if we can. Pardon? Go ahead.
So, so just so that I understand, so 2020, from a regulatory perspective, it's state-mandated. 2017, we just want to be good corporate citizens, if you will, from an energy perspective, the city of Lancaster, correct? So we're, we're trying to advance ourselves three years.
Yes.
Is there any fear that some of those very same developers that we have today could take the business elsewhere for the next three years, because everyone else is going to have to play ball, right, every other city, in 2020? Is there any concern there? Because, and I see which direction that Chairman Vos is going. We, we want smart growth in this community. That's one of the very reasons that I give my time in, in being involved in this commission. But decisions like this, where we're three years ahead of where we have to be from a state perspective, there's some fear there. Thirty-nine homes, thirty-nine homes in a city with one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty residents. We've sold thirty-nine. There's, there's something wrong. There's something wrong with that math for me. And, and I don't know what that answer is, but you can continue your line of questioning, because it's not helping my case, I don't think, for me. It's just speaking for me.
Well, like a lot of things that we do, and I mean, I think you said it very succinctly. I mean, we balance and try to, you know, try to be equitable in our decisions. Ultimately, whatever we decide, the City Council will make a final determination on this. We have, you know, we'll have another, assuming we don't act, take action tonight, we'll have another hearing on this next month, and hopefully everyone will be here to, to be able to make a determination. But I'm trying to understand the equity here, the balance. How, how do we balance the scale here and, you know, what's, what's the best for our community? That's a challenge I have, and I'm not close yet, so. However, I do appreciate, personally appreciate, all the hard work you've done in the short period of time. And we've talked about this back this summer, but we were otherwise occupied with other more...
More important.
Hotter, hot-button issues, I guess you'd say. And, and now we've, we're, we're jammed to, to make a decision on this in a relatively short period of time. So we don't have the luxury of time. We have the luxury of spending as much time as we need by our, by our meeting in December. That's our challenge. So, anyone else have any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you very much for your attention, and there may be other questions as folks present tonight for you. Speakers, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Merle McLernan.
Hello, Merle. Welcome.
Merle McLernan, architect. Very interesting process. So one question for Warren right away. Better Built Homes, the twenty-five percent kick that we got on our development fees, what's that in dollars on a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house? Do you know?
It's probably about twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars.
A little bit. About a dollar a foot, somewhere in there. Okay. Because what we're trying to do makes sense. The question is, can somebody qualify to buy the house that we want everybody to build? Thirty-nine homes? Ooh, it's tough. Two watts per square foot, I can design way under that myself. It's not that hard. There's a house on the west side right now that I have at one point one watt per square foot, eight-dollar energy bill. It can be done. Just happens to be faced the right way. So orientation comes back into play. So the ordinance allows value by design, so it takes that twenty-thousand-dollar number right away to fifteen, and we take a little bit more out for their thirty percent kick. My guess is in 2020, zero-net energy. It's going to be a kick for anything. It's required. Why would they give anybody money for it? So at that point, we'll have to design better. The question is, will our technology improve that much in three years? I don't think so. Walls are going to be a little thicker. The attic's going to be better. Forced-air units are forced-air units. They're efficient. Windows are good. Are the buyers able to buy the house? I don't know. As an architect, I get custom homes. If I have half-acre lots, one-acre lots, and I'm going to put a large home on there, I'm going to design it zero-net energy, and I'm going to save them a lot of money. But if I'm going to build a two-thousand-square-foot tract home, this is a tough sell. It's a really tough thing to do. So I'm in favor of it, but mechanically, keep the kick for Better Built Homes. These are better homes anyway. So right away, make the recommendation, we'll approve it, but leave that reduction in fees in place. Just leave it there. Because ultimately, Lancaster gets what they want. It's a small price decrease for the developers, and I think we'll hear from them that this is not going to be easy.
So, Merle, you're, you're designing them but not actually constructing them, right?
I have one, one house, Better Built Home, small one. I don't think he has an energy bill, actually, because he's twelve hundred square feet and it's one guy. I think he's actually on the positive. But if we had a small family in there, it would probably still be balanced. So it's possible to do. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. Go ahead.
One of the things that wasn't mentioned there is although we're recommending two watts per square foot, if they can demonstrate, like Merle just mentioned, that they can accomplish it with a smaller system, we'd certainly be open to that.
And how, and how would that be done? What's the, I mean, what's the process? Just, what, what would they have to do? Have to hire a, a energy consultant?
Yeah.
To, to demonstrate that?
Calculations. They can make the house more energy efficient. So there are things that they can do that way that could reduce the amount of solar that would be required. And that's kind of the direction the state's heading. They want the houses as efficient as possible, and then what's left is, is all solar.
So what, this is, so if we, if we do a trade-off and collect the fee but don't make the home energy efficient, what's the advantage, other than collecting revenue and building industrial-grade solar? What, you know, where's the advantage in the structure?
Yeah. It's, it's an allowance the state is doing right now, that is giving the trade-off for the fifteen percent energy efficiency with the 2017 standard that'll come into play. But that's, that's a very good, good argument. I don't have an answer.
So that those homeowners, ultimately, whomever they may be, over time, would not enjoy the energy efficiency directly in their living environment? Right? All right. Am I getting that right? If, if the, if the builder chose to pay a fee, a mitigation fee, that structure would be less energy efficient because of that payment of a fee? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, but the state, and that was one of the questions we had when we contacted the state, if there was an off-site system like what we were proposing there with the ZNE mitigation fee, could they still take advantage of, of the trade-off? And they said, no. It, it had to be on the house. So they don't get to have a less efficient home by putting the solar remotely. They only get the benefit if it's on the house.
Yeah. In, in other words, as we understood it, fifteen percent more energy-efficient requirement kicks in in 2017, they would, they would have to have that still, even if they had some kind of off-site arrangement. They wouldn't be relieved of that fifteen percent requirement.
So by, so the 2017 energy-efficient standard, construction standard, is a given?
Yes.
Baseline?
Yes. That's, that's going into effect regardless.
So this proposal is to reach in three years into the future, less whatever time it takes for the state to agree that the methodology proposed meets their standards?
That is a good way to, to outline it. That is, that is what you are looking at. And although Patty kind of touched on it, one other thing that I think is important, Warren and Patty may have more information on this, but I think the state, despite the fact that they've mandated this ZNE approach by 2020, they are still, I think, looking around, if you will, for how that is exactly going to tumble its way out. We, we do have kind of a unique opportunity here, if you want to look at it that way, that the, the city and ultimately the building community that's a part of it may, through this ordinance, if it were to move forward, may have the opportunity to have a, have a voice in that that's maybe a little greater than we might otherwise have, because they're going to be looking at how the city intends to, to try to make this work.
I'm glad this is easy. I, really, I'm, I'm excited. This is really pretty simple. So we have other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two other...
Before I divert into some other... Never mind.
DeAndre Valencia.
Mr. Valencia. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. For those who don't know, my name is DeAndre Valencia. I'm the Director, Director of Government Affairs for the Building Industry Association of Los Angeles, Ventura County. We represent about eleven hundred companies that are in the business of building homes. More specifically, here in Lancaster, we represent and, and speak on behalf of Beazer Homes, KB Homes, Epic Companies, even Pacific Communities, and other ones throughout the community. We are here and we see it the same way you see it. It comes down to the fee. You know, we understand Lancaster's motivation to move forward and to be... You know, we understand Lancaster's motivation to move forward and to be the solar king of the nation. We understand that. But we just want to make sure that there's no undue burden put onto the developer which will increase housing costs. And like you've heard here today, it's kind of abysmal of how much you're producing. You're producing 39 homes a year, basically, and it's been like that. And if this goes into fact, and goes into and is accepted, it's going to drop. Simple as that. All right? You're going to increase housing costs, and people won't be able to afford or qualify for them, just to get solar. So we're here. We've come to the table. We want to work with you. We want to see something that won't be as hurtful to us as it is currently proposed. Our first issue is, number one, we understand there's a mitigation fee study that will be done, but it won't be done until after this ordinance has been adopted by the council. What are we basing our numbers off of? What is the nexus between the cost and the need of this fee? That's what we need to get the ball going. It's kind of, you're building the house and then you're doing the EIR later on, or you're putting the cart before the horse. It should be the other way around. Number two, we need a reduction in the fee. As you hear, your impact fees and all the building fees that accumulative is a lot. All right? Now you're talking about increasing that by 35 to 40%. Now, I appreciate the city coming out with the option three. That was a big concern for us, because we do want to qualify and get that fit and get the credit in regards to Title 24, which was the topless from having to build high-performance walls and attics. All right? Option three allows us to do that. Now, when you talk about you can use a smaller system, if you can prove it, that it works, well, that's kind of mute, because if we do that, we won't qualify for the credit on Title 24. We will still have to do high-performance walls and attics. And so that's still going to be a big increase. So if we, either way we go, we're still going to be paying more. All right? Lastly, we ask for a phase-in, whatever this fee comes out to be. You do the math, 40 times whatever this fee comes out to be is a small drop in the bucket. But it's going to be a heavy burden on the developer to sell the home. It's not worth it. And so we ask you, if you do continue to move forward with this, that you do a phase-in strategy, that over the next three years, these fees will be increased, so maybe the first year will be 50% of that fee that you said. The next year, that's 75%. And the last one, we can go to 100% as it becomes law. And lastly, we ask for some type of trade-offs. Now, we understand if you trade off, you give us something for doing this, you're going to lose, not credibility, but you're going to lose, if you pay impact fees, you're going to take away from your traffic, you're going to take away from schools, just to get the solar done. And it's not worth it in my eyes. Thank you.
Oh, DeAndre.
Yes.
Don't run away. When you get the opportunity to talk, we get to share with you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What would you, or representing the BIA, what would your recommendation or solution be to get us to net zero?
Well, we're already there. The state's already headed there in that direction. You know, I understand there's a political motivation to get out there, and I would want my city to be looked upon as the greatest in solar. I would love that. But we're just not getting there. And so we need to reduce that fee to where it's not, it doesn't hurt us, $1,000 maybe, something low. We can't eat and take on additional $5,000, $600 for a $2,000 home. Or if we go to option three, additional $2,800, I believe it is. It's still just adding fees on top of fees. So to be honest, we would ask you not to recommend this to the council. And go as is, because we're already going there, and the next three years, we'll be there. So that is a true honest recommendation that we would ask, but we understand your endeavors, and so let's make this fee as small as possible. And yeah.
So what do we gain by trade-offs?
You don't really gain in a trade-off.
We don't?
We don't. Because, we asked because-
That we should have trade-offs, but you're saying we don't gain from them.
Well, you don't. They help the developer to afford and to build here. Maybe that's what you will be able to get and continue to have, you know, building here. But like I said, if you trade off and you reduce impact fees, which we love, but the school fees that we pay, they're not going to get 100% of it if you guys give us something. Or the traffic, or sewer fees.
Well, you know, it's interesting, you're hitting on school fees. I have some experience in that arena. If you don't build homes, people don't buy them, and people who buy, don't buy them, don't have children. And those children don't go to school, so there's no need for the mitigation fees.
Exactly.
Even though the mitigation fees don't, are insufficient to build schools. They only build about 60% of a new school. So I wouldn't dwell too much on that argument. It's a no-sell, as far as I'm concerned. We'd asked, you attended a couple of the meetings, or one of the meetings, I guess it was, with some of the other stakeholders, and we had, we had asked for some statistical information so we can make an informed decision, or you haven't been able to provide that?
Well, yes. We're working right now with our partner, parent organization or association, California Building Industry Association. And we thought we had time. You know, from our first initial talks, we thought this was going to be an urgent emergency ordinance, and we were told that it would take its time. But since then, it has been speeding up, and has, as you said earlier, it is, in the last two months, it's come pretty far. And so, yes, we haven't had the time to get our study. Unfortunately, it's taking longer than we had predicted.
So when do you think we would have it in our hot little hands? We, you know, we here.
I would have to, I would have to reach back out and follow up with you guys tomorrow, follow up with Brian and get an understanding.
Because from tonight to our next meeting, which is the, what, 19th?
Yes.
19th of December. On the 18th of December, we don't want to be looking at something that's hot off the press.
No, I understand that.
Maybe by the end of next week would be the time to have it to our attention. That way, we can have an opportunity individually to study it and have some frame of reference when we meet again.
Yes. No, I would do my best to do that. Unfortunately, it's not up to me, but I will-
No, I understand. I understand. But, you know-
No, and I want to provide you with the most up-to-date information so you can make a decision and see what we're talking about.
Yeah, and, yeah, we're looking for, you know, factual information rather than the anecdotal information. And, you know, everybody, everybody is giving us the straight word here, so we believe everybody.
One question for you.
Go ahead.
They said that there was an ITC credit that was a dollar-for-dollar drop on your builders' tax. Would that offset the extra fees?
No.
Would you be able to figure out how many developers would be able to take advantage of that?
Well, they're already taking advantage of it. You know, so now by you increasing this fee, you're basically taking that away, in a sense. You know, it's not something new because of this ordinance, because they're going solar, they're getting this, this program. No, this program's already been established, and the developers have been using it, you know, and it's a reason why they did, so get more solar out there. But now, you're asking to increase and to make us pay a mitigation fee, which is, you know, if we do get that, that savings, small savings, it's still going to, the fee's going to make up that cost. And so we're still paying it out anyway. So, yes, we will take advantage and use those programs. You know, we'll take free money anytime we can get it, to do what we need to do, so. Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to receiving your information. Another speaker, Mr. Lutke?
Yes, one remaining. Slip, Mr. Chairman, it's Nelson Chung.
Mr. Chung, and welcome.
Good evening.
Been a day or two since I've seen you.
Mr. Chairman and the Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for, because three of you, actually, between the Chairman, Vice Chairman, and the Commissioner Harvey, you already raised a lot of questions I do have. So you guys are, just, we are on the same page. Bottom line is, we, as longtime home builder in town, and through the up and down, so we do support a better home, better communities. The question is, how do we get there? And as we say, always said, you know, the devil always in the detail. First of all, I don't know how much time I have, but if you feel I over-exhausted my time, you know, cut me off any time. Before I start, I want to share a data, before I compose that, before I can, all the home we closed this year out of my projects on Pacific Law Center on 45th Street West, about 53% with VA loan, 27 with FHA. So about 80%, those are the folks, they barely get into the house without much cash available. That raise, that share, I want to embrace your question about the appraisal issue, because I check, I do check, I reach out to appraiser in the industry. Basically, they give no more than five to 10 grand max as credit. The reason for that is they use the saving and project out seven years max. That's the value they give to you.
That's for the, for the solar element?
Yes. Yes, sir. And also, and we do embrace, embrace the city's concept of a solar farm, because, for a lot of reasons, because inefficiency of the individual units, as we always know, the layout of the tract is not necessarily always east-west, or, so all the, all the roof are facing the right direction. And also aesthetically, you may not like the way with a big plan roof. And on top of that, we, there are two questions that hasn't been discussed, is long-term maintenance, which that's, that's something just scale hell out of the builder, because we don't know how to maintain those equipment after a couple of years if this provider or installer disappear. As big as a solar, a solar city, they sold to Tesla not too long ago for a reason. They almost are bankrupt. So that's why in my tract, by the way, our tract is the one, we probably pulled $25, $35 permit this year, and we are the one going to pull 54 units, take advantage of the better home. It's very painful, but the flip side is uglier, so we have to do it before the end of the year.
It's serious money you're talking about.
Yes, sir. It's painful.
Joy, you can-
And besides long-term maintenance, another, another issue is the Fed subsidy about, for the solar panel system, is sunset in 2019. And we don't know if we're going to get another extension this time. If we don't, the common words on the market is about 75% of solar installer will be out of the business. So we, as a home builder, as a responsible home builder, we have to look at it more carefully. That's why in my tract, we only do leasing, not a, not a, not a purchasing, because that reason, because if three years down the road, my provider out of the business, what I'm going to do? I mean, I'm, everybody, all my homeowner located me for a custom service. I'm dead.
So how do, how, how do you avoid the warranty requirement?
If it's leasing, the worst thing can happen, if they don't come out to service my customer, you don't pay. At least you have one leverage. If I purchase, I don't have any leverage whatsoever. I'd be out, I'd be out of luck. That's one of the, those things we have not, we have not addressed issue. One, there are, although, at the meantime, I do have some suggestion, if I may to, one as Andrea talked about earlier, the way the fee program is a great concept. The question is, how much? And how much we're talking about? Because as is, if we choose to pay fee in lieu of installing the panel, we may have to install a solar panel, regardless, just to meet the Title 24 requirement. So it, in, almost like a double dipping, if you can say that. On the fee, and also on the fee side, I just have a thought, I don't know if it's workable or not, because it's a great concept if we can save our homebuyer utility bill in the long term. But at the meantime, the issue is appraisal. Can we get that house appraised? If we don't, who is going to pay for? Right? I mean, there's an issue. But one thought I do have is, can we have some kind of like an expo CFD program to finance the fee we're talking about today? But, so the home builder, we can annex our project into that, and who is going to pay for it? The homeowner is going to pay for. But the savings they receive on energy, a portion of that, they may be able to use that to offset the fee program we're talking about. Earlier, Chairman mentioned the fee we have to pay so far. Actually, there are some other big chunk, like, for instance, for AVAC, in order for them to secure the water, recently, there's a new one come in, which is, it's about 10K per acre foot. So each unit, you pay somewhere like eight to 10 grand in addition. So, by the end, before I conclude my presentation, I just want to share one statistic. I don't, I just walk into this data just recently. There is so much value to own a home in US, not, it's not just American dreams. It's the difference between, the net worth difference between a homeowner versus a renter, if any one of you knows the statistic. The ratio is 45 to 1. It's a 45 to 1. The reason, obvious, the obvious reason is-
Real wealth. You're talking about real wealth, right?
Is inflation. Is the inflation. And if you don't own a home, you don't enjoy that inflation. So it's so crucial to get our people into a house. It's not just an American dream. So I'm here to, again, I'm here to, thank you, allow me to have a lengthy presentation, but I'm here to answer any question you may have.
Well, thank you. And we appreciate what you've offered tonight, and we're hungry for factual information. You touched on Community Facilities District, and I know you've been involved with CFDs and other jurisdictions-
Yes, sir.
-that I've worked on, south of us, a few, a few miles down the road, right? How would you structure a CFD for this piece of the puzzle, if you will? For the, for the energy efficiency, if we call it a energy efficiency Community Facilities District? How would you, how would you package that?
Normally, we're going to, we need to form something like, they call it an expo CFD, which is very similar to currently you may have, like a high school CFD around here. The later one can always choose to annex into that, by, either by tract or by portion of the tract, a time to commit, so that whoever the owner, at the time, can annex into the CFD. The beauty of that is city get a fund earlier, faster in a chunk, versus one by one upon building permit. But in the meantime, the builder is not out of pocket on the spot, because we, that's another thing, if we have to out of spot, that, that would create some other issue, like appraisal issue we talked about earlier. Granted, the total CFD, if ramp up to very high, that's not good either. You're not going to sell house. So we certainly, we have to review the amount we can finance. But in this particular case, one beauty is the saving on energy. That by itself, kind of offsetting the negative effect of that CFD, which is very unique opportunity we have not seen in any other place. And this is one, the solar energy is one unique resource or capital the city has. We got to make it- to make the best out of that.
Interesting concept, I, I think it's worth spending some time on, because we're not talking about a huge amount of money per unit.
Right.
In, in relationship to a typical CFD, which would be capitalizing all your infrastructure, if you will, we're only talking about one element of infrastructure, as opposed to streets and curb and gutter and sidewalk and sewer and water and all the other typical stuff.
Right.
Or schools or whatever, right?
Right. And even more important is if we can reach up to, to the capital, to get this be, get this type of mitigation be part of Title 24, that, hallelujah, that will be the win-win.
And, and then it would be, you know, an easier, potentially an easier buy-in for everyone.
Earlier, I heard you keep asking, what's, what's for the city? That will be the one for the city, because if that become a bona fide mitigation for, not only for the city, could be for others, other city. The, the, the reason I keep raising this kind of statement is, our building actually compare, in comparison to house built 30 years ago, house today are very tight as is. Anybody knows, the improvement at certain stage, the, the cost versus additional benefit gradually kind of flattening out. Anything is possible, if we can send people to Moon in 1969, then we can build a very tight house. The question is how much?
And what, and what you can appraise, what you can finance?
Yeah.
What you can qualify for? It's interesting, when, and your numbers are supportable, 53% VA, most of your VA appraisers are out of Los Angeles.
Very tight, they're very tough.
And they don't know this marketplace.
They're very tough.
At least from the, from my colleagues in the residential field, that's what they're telling me. And the FHA are, you know.
Not, not good, not even.
Not much different.
Right. And out of those two category, if one appraisal, say for, for short, the appraisal report stay on the property for six months, we really have a problem.
Well, I know, I know you, you've been very active in our community for a long, long time, and, and have been generous with your information to all of us, and we appreciate that very much. I, I, I think your phone's going to be ringing again before, probably before tomorrow afternoon.
Anytime.
But, the folks that were here tonight, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Chung? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Any other speakers?
Not on this item, Mr. Chairman.
So where do we go from here, folks? Do we have enough information to make a decision on this tonight? Nope, nope. All right, then we will agendize this on the front end of our agenda next time, can we do that?
Yeah, well, basically listed as continued item, and that, it goes to the front of the agenda then.
That way we can get as much information as we can, and understand, I, I think it's clear that, that we do need more information.
Correct.
And, and from those representatives of the industry, as well as any members of the general public that would like to weigh in on this. But we are, our intent is to take action somewhere, at some form and fashion, by next meeting, on the 19th, right?
Yes, that's, that's our laid-out schedule here.
Chairman, those on this sheet here that lists off the impact and development fees?
Yeah.
It doesn't, it says solar inspection fee, I was wondering if they could then give an approximate line in there that shows what the, maybe, you know, mitigation fees or solar fees, how much that would add, so the bottom number there, approximate building fees for new, would reflect that, that would give me more information in my hand that would make it a little easier to see.
Yeah, and the other comment, we just heard about the A-VAC fees increasing, I was not aware that they had increased yet.
Yeah, most of the tracks that are being developed right now, they've already paid their fees on that, so they're not being impacted with that right now.
Right.
But that is something that new development is.
If you're pulling new meters, you're, you're going to pay the increased A-VAC fee, whatever that is.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Have staff got enough, and, and I would suggest, I haven't, I haven't gone through this line, well, yeah, I actually have gone through it line by line. What are my notes? My notes to myself, as if it makes any difference. Practical, I read in item number 1D in the recommendation under the resolution, if practical, amend the municipal code to address requirements of solar energy use. My understanding of practical means, is it realistic, is it sensible, is it rational, is it businesslike, is it feasible, is it useful? I think we need to answer, answer those questions. Between now and then. All right, anything else on this matter? Are we ready to take up the next item? Everybody ready? Everybody wants to go home, I know. All right, we've got a couple things to talk about. January 16th and February 20th are both federal holidays, so City Hall's closed. January 16th is Martin Luther King Jr.'s Day, I guess, yeah, that's the way it's described, and February 20th is President's Day, those are both federal holidays. The suggestion from staff is either continue our meeting one week thereafter, on the following Monday for each of those, which we have done in the past, or trail it by one day to either January 17th and February 21st, and if I understand it correctly, Mr. Ludkey, January 19th and February 23rd, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, but not the, not the Wednesday?
No.
Tuesday, it would either be Tuesday or Thursday of the, of the week, of the holiday, or the following Monday?
Or the following Monday.
Why don't we make it complicated? I don't know if I can remember what I just said.
Can add a couple more options for you if you'd like.
Option, oh yeah, that's what we need, is more options.
I'll be out of town on the 23rd of January 2017.
Okay. So, January, you said? January 23rd, you're going to be gone?
Yes, February is fine.
So what if we, what if we just meet on Tuesday? Does that impact anybody's schedule life?
Tuesday the 17th?
Yeah, just the following day. Can that work? Work for you, everybody? Why don't, why don't we just trail it one day? That way it doesn't, I mean, does, does that impact staff's level of work?
No, it's, it's, actually, it makes the schedule kind of easy, because it's just one day difference.
And it doesn't impact the following meeting?
Correct.
Because it doesn't shorten your prep time?
Right, yeah, that's important also.
Apparently not, not those nights.
Council meets second and fourth, that would be the, actually, the third Tuesday.
So, so if we say we would adjourn, excuse me, we would set January 17th instead of January 16th, and February 21st instead of February 20th, as, as our dates for the future calendar?
Yes. Yes, those, those dates work.
Okay. You don't need a motion on that, do you?
No, I think just, just consensus direction, it says, that's what you want to do, and that's what we'll do.
Okay. Director's announcement?
Not really a lot this evening, Mr. Chairman, although you alluded, although not naming it, the Medical Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance is scheduled to go to the City Council on the 13th of December, so.
Interesting, I had a call from the Valley Press today asking me about that. I'm not going to call them back. Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You do have a speaker's card for non-agenda items.
Oh, we do, oh, okay, great, terrific. So, this is Public Business from the floor, non-agendized items. So a speaker would be offered three minutes for any item not covered on the agenda?
Yes.
And the speaker is?
Matt Antony.
Matt, what was it?
Antony.
Antony.
Antony, welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to introduce myself and my organization as the City of Lancaster in Barkstone, or continues to discuss medical marijuana, and in addition, I wanted to commend you for taking the issue seriously, especially following the vote last Tuesday. We've dealt with ordinances throughout California, our organization has, and I just wanted to offer up any information, I know you guys do like to make informed decisions, so any information you might need, or any sort of, maybe perspective from other cities, the way they've handled these ordinances, the things they've done right, the things they've done wrong, we are here to help, so just wanted to say that and introduce myself.
What's the name of your organization?
Green Mojave Farms.
And do you grow here?
No, 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 we, we actually have been based in Colorado, but we are looking into expanding into California via, obviously, the legal frameworks that are set up right now.
Is it Mojave with a J or an H?
It's with a J.
Came here with a name, already.
What's that?
He already came here prepared with a name.
All right. You are, you are, and thank you, you are aware that, and I assume you picked up on what Mr. Ludkey said, the City Council at their next regular meeting will pick, will be considering Medical Cannabis Growing Ordinance.
Okay.
Not, not, not retail, not distribution.
Understood, understood.
Not testing, not any of that.
Well, you got to start somewhere, right? So, yeah, we are here, here to help, in any way that you guys should need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else, Mr. Ludkey?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So we, anybody else? Ready to rock and roll here? Okay, time to go home. So we stand adjourned to our special meeting, a agenda review, Monday, December 12, 2016, at 5:30 PM here in the Park Recreation and Conference Room, Art Conference Room, here at City Hall. And thank you all for your hard work tonight, appreciate it, and thank you, staff, it's a, a lot of work went into what you folks were doing tonight, thank you.